There you go, we'll call this the city council exception to order. We'll put you in the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Brackman?
Here.
Caruva?
Here.
Reynolds?
Reynolds.
Faulkner?
Here.
Epple?
Here.
Kiverza?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President Holt?
Here.
This is an opportunity for the public to speak. We're going to be here to make you address the council. Please state your name and address and the material remarks to follow.
Jesse, there.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Cicely. I live 20 Parker Street, Jamestown, New York. I was here at the last city council meeting, talked about the deer problem in Jamestown. And I've also spoken to doctors and they said that the deer tick, they've had more cases this year than they've ever had, more Lyme disease cases. And it's a problem. And now they were talking about having a committee. My suggestion is if they do form a committee, have questions before the committee so that they can look into stuff. Because what I'm understanding is, last year you had a few council members that bombarded, you know, the committee with questions the day of the vote. And it wasn't, you know, it's like they didn't have the answers. And I think that that might have been one of the reasons that we got shot down. What I'm asking and suggesting is that if they do have a committee that can get done this year, get questions early. We've got other places that they said they've been doing it successfully for like 20 years. And they, they should be talking to these people, getting answers, but get the questions first. Don't ask at the last second and almost like snowball it and bombard these, you know, with questions that people are like, oh geez, they don't know what they're doing, so we better vote it down. They should get the answers, they should get the questions first, early, not when they, not when they go to vote, to kind of confuse everybody else. Get the answers that you need, that's what you need. We've got a very bad deer problem in this city, and we've got to take care of it. It's, it's, it's bad. I mean, I've got, I mean, I can show you pictures, I took pictures of my flowers while stems this year. I've got a whole side of my house full of stems because of the deer. I've got hostas that are down to the ground. There's other people in the city that have the same problem. You want a beautiful city, but you're not taking the time to cure one of the problems. And if you're not one of the solutions, you're part of the problem. And that's all I've got to say. We've got this bad deer problem here, and we've got to take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can you speak?
So Champ, 2251 Street, Jamestown, New York. I had a bad hair day, so I got my hat on. I don't want to be a victim of my environment. I want my environment to be a victim of me. Where did that come from? Jack Nicholson, the department. The first part of that, victim of your environment. People live in areas where they are a victim of their environment. To no fault of their own, they get targeted, they're untargeted. The issue I've had is I've met with you so many times before, and you were late getting behind this gun violence issue. Yes, you've done things, you haven't done enough. You're late with officers on the ground. Because if you had done this last year, when I suggested it, we would have them in place now. We're going to bring a noise control guy, officer, after the noise season is over with. Probably come on board after the first of the year, if I remember. Snowmobiles in the city maybe will be a problem that I don't know. The mayor had a conference, press conference, in the safe house of the city hall. My question is, it's not the city hall that's under siege, it's streets like Pernigas. So why don't we have the press conference away from the crime scene on Pernigas, not in the safe house of city hall? Now you say you're going to have a public forum on safety. You want to hear from the people, people like me, people not as active as them. I'm going to ask you what you're going to do about it. What is the purpose behind, other than this community's public safety, what's more important than that? The mayor said a statement in his press conference, the most important thing. I couldn't agree more. But we've been behind on this. The mayor's first budget only called for one patrol car. Radios, they're one up the stairs. Another action which I can't quite remember. That was tabled, we didn't do anything with that with that first budget. So now, oh, you've been pole picking, hoping, into the arena of adding more public safety offices. Wonderful. Should have been done before now. And if I have to read the reg again and tell you what you can do with American public rescue money, it's all in there. You're overtime. These officers, detectives, that worked all weekend to solve a case and worked toward the end solving of it, that's all reimbursable in American Rescue Plan. All of it. Everything from 2021, April 1st till now, dealing with gun violence is reimbursable. So would you rather have the American Rescue Plan pay for this, or you want the taxpayers to pay for it? That's your option right now. Overtime, it's all eligible, all eligible. So what I'm asking now is a morbid commitment above and beyond what you've already done. If there's $10 million still available, I want you to put $2 million into public safety. And if you can't, I want to know why you don't want to. You're all are going to go up to get selections next year. What do you want to be known for? What is your promise? What are you going to talk about? You just don't knock on doors when the election comes. I think all city councilmen should be out in their wards now, explaining to the people, are we under siege or are we not under siege? And I don't care about targeting. Targeting affects all of us. My grandson lives on Lakeview Avenue, here at the shops. He asked his father if there were fireworks. How are we going to explain all this that, no, there weren't fireworks? There are reports, automatic report, of probably an automatic pistol. I can't tell you how it's important it is for you to focus on public safety now. Don't forget about 2026. Some of you won't even be here. Maybe I won't either. Probably like to that. So anyway, my plea to you again, and I'd like to hear why, and I appreciate what you've done, but it's not enough. It's not enough. Now, surveillance cameras can be put on in every intersection in a high crime area to see who's going in and going out, that could be done. I asked to create a mobile precinct, a mobile precinct, which is a large RV, not some trailer, that can be stationed at certain areas as a deterrent to crime and also as a focal point for the neighbors to get involved with the police. So you want to spend $300,000 on branding the city? Nobody cares about that, really, if you've got a problem with crime and violence in the city. It's more important to have something like that available than it is in terms of branding. I've been through the branding episode. The only people who should be branded are the fellas, who get released every day when they do something. I don't know what else I can tell you. Either do it, or you don't. But when you have the public forum and the questions are asked, what are you doing about our safety? And the police department is wonderful. They know I backed them all the way through all this. Lobbyed city council, in listening for folks. Finally, some things have happened, but not enough. 20%, 20% of $10 million. Either got to go big or go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address?
Council?
20251 Lane Street. Just one question. Could raise your hands, I know some people have jobs inside city hall that they could not leave or whatever, not required to leave. Show of hands, who was down there Friday? On Friday, yes.
On Friday? When, what do you tie it up?
The shooting.
Yeah, but what, you mean down there?
Down there. I don't know. It's your war. It's your city. Were you down there?
Yeah, I was. After I found out there was a shooting, I did go.
I was, there was an active crime scene, I was not going down there.
All I need to know.
I went down, I spoke to the police chief, and I spoke to a former police chief, and I got out.
Did you talk a lot of this issuance?
No, it was an active crime scene, I'm not going to.
No, they talked, they.
I've been down there, I've been down there several times.
Okay.
You asked a question, I answered it.
I got my answer.
Anyone else that speaks?
Yeah. Moses Federini, 346 Walker Street. I spoke at DPW meeting and at House and Committee meeting back in December, I think it was. I came to the council and the mayor and proposed a neighborhood liaison position, gave you a paper from Louisiana, and gave a little bit more in detail on another separate piece of paper, and I haven't, we haven't talked about it, we haven't heard anything about it. And, and I really think that when Doug talks about public safety, the word public safety to me means more than police. Public safety to me means more code enforcement officers, means more parks and recreation people. Parks and recreation people now have added two extra things on their, well, not yet, the skate park's not open, but once that's open, that's going to be an extra thing on their plate. Dan Stone, you know, has a lot on their plate, there's a lot of things that he can even get to. I've sent the mayor and all of the council a video, nine minute video, of the things that I have noticed in the city. I'm not saying that nobody didn't do their job, or that someone's bad, or whatever, but over time, there are many signs in the city that are covered by trees. We live in an angry forest. It's a very angry forest. And, and I think that when we start to let people continue to do things, guess what they're going to continue to do? They're going to continue to break the law, you know? And, and I feel like, you know, I was born, well, I wasn't born here, I was born in Dunkirk, raised here in Jamestown, and never in my life have I ever seen it so bad. The crime, the homelessness, the traffic violations, everything. And where do we start? You know? Like, where do you start when you write your next budget? You know? The Parks and Recreation Department needs help. They need two or three more people. Crystal needs seven. You know, I don't know where you'd find them, but, but you know what I mean? Like, like, we talk about, we talk about public safety, public safety starts within the home. Jeff said we got a people problem. We don't need police reform, we need people reform. People forgot how to act. These people, I was at Sneakers the other day, the bar opened, I went down to see if someone wanted to buy Zappa snacks. And this guy walks down the street screaming and yelling, flapping his arms, doing all this stuff, tried to get into the bar. The woman that was working was filling in for the owner. And I went over and locked the door, and this guy was in the row. We have a serious drug problem, and I don't know when someone's going to take notice. You know, I don't know. I mean, supposedly we have all these mental health places that are supposed to be helping people, but I don't see it, man. I don't see it. We're, 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 I actually think sometimes those places encourage drug problems, because all the drug addicts are going and hanging out together. Because I'm, you know, I just don't, I just don't know. I mean, this is not the Jamestown that I grew up in. And I know that things have changed, and I know the loud music is all insane. Insane, I can't even sit in my living room during the day without hearing Spanish music. I'm sorry. You know, I love Zumba, I love Spanish music, but I don't want to hear it. If you want to play it that loud, play it in your own home, because I don't want to hear it. Put a target on my back, I don't care, people won't talk about me. People talk about me all the time, doesn't matter. Anyway, one thing I would like to ask, and I don't know if it's even anything that can be done, can there be a curfew put on the city of Jamestown during this time of need? Anybody?
I think there is one.
The curfew exists for.
For kids.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, we have a serious problem where these kids with guns are 16, 17, 18 years old. They don't care, they don't give a flying nothing when people play, and we're live, but.
The noise are, noise ordinance is 24 hours a day, there's not specific times.
Yeah, but it can't be policed.
Under the city code section, under the city code section, they can issue the parent certificate at any time, under section 198, two way of the city code, so there's not specific times for that. One of the council members said there's, there's times for you, you're supposed to be off the street, and that doesn't always happen. Yes, the noise stuff, I mean, the parent state is issued, that's what it's always been, that's a non-hysterical election. Really, you can't bring them in jail anymore for that, make them full of death.
Right. I just feel like, you know, if we keep letting kids get away with things as they are, you know, a lot of these kids don't have that parent at home maybe that is making them come in and, I don't know, I had me in when the streetlights went on, you know? That doesn't happen anymore. That doesn't happen. We, we, we here in the city have changed, us older generation are now the older generation. You know, I never thought that I'd say that in my life, but, and one of the other things too that I've noticed is, you know, tinted windows. These cars with tinted windows. I tinted windows in my car when I lived in Texas, because it's legal there. It's not legal in New York State to have killer tint on your windows. When I can't see who's in the driver's seat, that makes me nervous. I don't know about any of y'all, but, you know, before this shooting happened on Pernigas, and I saw you look at the time, Tony, I'll hurry. There were two other shootings in that neighborhood that guns were shot. I walked out of my house a week before that first shooting with a friend, I was at my friend's house on Sturgis, and I walked out with him, and a car pulled up the street with tinted windows, and the car, like, like this, and I was scared. For the first time in my life, I was scared to be in Jamestown. And then two weeks later, a week later, shooting, shooting, right around the corner from where my friend's son plays outside, till nine o'clock sometimes. And these shootings are happening during the day. I know, I know that there's no way to stop violence totally, 100%, but we need to be better. And I really, really, really would like for you guys to read address privately with me about the neighborhood liaison, because I think that it's a great thing. It'd be two positions, part-time, two people working with each ward council person. There's 5,000 people in each ward, give or take, because the census ain't right. If you think people are filling out that census correctly, you are, you need to go back to school. Okay?
Thank you. Is anyone else?
I'm sorry.
Gary Mooney, Hotel Jamestown, Wintown, West Third Street, I'm Gary. I've been a resident of Jamestown for five years. I want to address council on this safety issue and public shootings. I am an advocate for public, public cameras to record in egress and ingress on major traffic flows, so that if anything nasty like this happens, we can have a record of what vehicles are entering and exiting the target area or the general area of Jamestown perimeter. I would like to see this extended to ramp holes on major intersections, and I would like to see a zoning incentive for private homeowners to include themselves in a city police registered camera system where the police can access public roadways provided by their locations. I just believe that the community can help, really help facilitate this record-keeping actively, so that when cars are in exit, screeching their wheels, that sort of thing, that would be obvious, but even cooperating with state authorities and the FBI, getting the national trafficking of these moles, mules, so that we can record what's coming into our village, what's coming into our city, and record them when they make their escape. It's not an invasion of privacy to get a public roadway. I believe that this is something that should be a permanent part of your police record and referenced to state and federal authorities when available. Thank you for your time.
Officer Reinhardt, correct me if I'm wrong, residents are asked to register or notify the police department if they do have cameras on their homes? It's strictly voluntary just to assist for the purpose of investigations as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm assuming that the pictures that were released of the suspect's vehicle the other day appears that it came from a residence. I don't know the residence, I'm not going to divulge it if I did, but obviously that helped the police in identifying that vehicle because of those cameras on the home.
Very true. I think that's, I think that's a good idea, you know, as far as that goes, but the other thing is like, we're speaking, you know, you're having to speak, but is there going to be anything done about, like, any of the problems that we've been, nobody's addressed us back. You'll be addressing it back later in the meeting as far as what you have done so far.
And I think that when we start to let people continue to do things, guess what they're gonna keep? They're gonna continue to break the law. You know, and I feel like, you know, I was born, well, I wasn't born here, I was born in Dunkirk, raised here in Jamestown, and never in my life have I ever seen it so bad. The crime, the homelessness, the traffic violations, everything. And where do we start? You know, like, where do you start? When you write your next budget? You know? The Parks and Recreation Department needs help. They need two or three more people. Crystal needs seven. You know, I don't know where you'd find them, but, but you know what I mean? Like, like, we talk about, we talk about public safety, public safety starts within the home. Jeff said we got a people problem, we don't need police reform, we need people reform. People forgot how to act. These people, I was at Sneakers the other day, the bar opened, I went down to, um, see if someone wanted to buy Zappa snacks. And this guy walks down the street screaming and yelling, flapping his arms, doing all this stuff, tried to get into the bar. The woman that was working was filling in for the owner. And I went over and locked the door, and this guy was in the row. We have a serious drug problem. And I don't know when someone's gonna take notice. You know, I don't know, I mean, supposedly we have all these mental health places that are supposed to be helping people, but I don't see it, man. I don't see it. We're, 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 I, I actually think sometimes those places encourage drug problems because all the drug addicts are going and hanging out together. Because I'm, you know, I, I just don't, I just don't know, I mean, this is not the Jamestown that I grew up in. And I know that things have changed, and I know the loud music is all insane. Insane, I can't even sit in my living room during the day without hearing Spanish music. I'm sorry. You know, I, I love Zumba, I love Spanish music, but I don't wanna hear it. If you want to play it that loud, play it in your own home. Because I don't wanna hear it. Put a target on my back, I don't care, people won't talk about me, people will talk about me all the time, doesn't matter. Anyway, one thing I would like to ask, and I don't know if there's even anything that can be done, can there be a curfew put on the city of Jamestown during this time of need? Anybody?
I think there is one.
The curfew exists for kids.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we have a serious problem where these kids with guns are sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old. They don't care, they don't give a fine, nothing. If you play, and we're live, but.
The noise are, noise ordinance is twenty-four hours a day, there's not specific times.
Yeah, but it can't be policed.
Under the city code section, um, under the city code section, they can issue their parents' ticket at any time under section one ninety-eight, two-way of the city code, so there's not specific times for that. One councilman or senator is, there's times for you kind of, you're supposed to be off the street. And that doesn't always happen, yes, the noise stuff, I mean, the parents' ticket is issued, um, that's what it's always been, that's a non-hysterical election. But you can't bring anyone to jail anymore for that, make them full stop.
Right, I just feel like, you know, if we keep letting kids get away with things as they are, you know, a lot of these kids don't have that parent at home maybe that is, is, is making them come in and, I don't know, I had the end when the streetlights went on. You know, that doesn't happen anymore, uh, that doesn't happen, we, we, we here in the city have changed. Us older generation are now the older generation. You know, I never thought that I'd say that in my life, but, um, and one, one of the other things too that I've noticed is, um, you know, tinted windows. These cars with tinted windows. I had tinted windows in my car when I lived in Texas, because it's legal there. It's not legal in New York State to have killer tint on your windows. When I can't see who's in the driver's seat, that makes me nervous. I don't know about any of y'all, but, you know, before this shooting happened on Frontiers, and I saw you look at the time, Tony, I'll hurry. Um, there were two other shootings in that neighborhood. That, that guns were shot. I walked out of my house a week before that first shooting with a friend, I was at my friend's house on Sturgis, and I walked out with him, and a car pulled up the street with tinted windows, and the car, like, like this. And I was scared. For the first time in my life, I was scared to be in Jamestown. And then two weeks later, a week later, shooting, shooting, right around the corner from where my friend's son plays outside, till nine o'clock sometimes. And these shootings are happening during the day. I know, I know that there's no way to stop violence totally, a hundred percent, but we need to be better. And I, I, I really, really, really would like for you guys to read a dress privately with me about the neighborhood liaison, because I think that it's a great thing. It'd be two positions, part-time, two people working with each ward councilperson. There's five thousand people in each ward, give or take. Cause the census ain't right. If you think people are filling out that census correctly, you are, you need to go back to school. Okay?
Thanks. Is there anyone else?
I'm sorry. Gary Mooney, Hotel Jamestown, One Towne, West Third Street, I'm Gary. Uh, I've been a resident of Jamestown for five years, I want to address, uh, council on this, uh, safety issue and public shootings. I am an advocate for public, uh, public, uh, cameras, uh, to record in egress and ingress on major traffic flows, uh, so that if anything nasty like this happens, we can have a, a record of what vehicles are entering and exiting the target area, uh, or the general area of Jamestown perimeter. I would like to see this extended to ramp holes on major intersections. And I would like to see a zoning incentive for private homeowners to in, include themselves in a city, uh, police-registered camera system where the police can access public roadways, uh, provided by their locations. I just believe that the community can help, really help facilitate this record-keeping, uh, actively, so that when cars are in, uh, exit, screeching air wheels, that sort of thing, uh, that would be obvious. But even cooperating with state authorities and the FBI, getting the national trafficking of, uh, these moles, mules, uh, so that we can record what's coming into our village, what's coming into our city, and, uh, record them when they make their escape. It's not an invasion of privacy to get a public roadway. Uh, I believe that this is something that should be a permanent part of your police record and referenced to, uh, state and federal authorities when available. Uh, thank you for your time.
Officer Reinhardt, correct me if I'm wrong, residents are asked to register or notify the police department if they do have cameras on their homes? Uh, it's strictly voluntary just to assist for the purpose of investigations as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that the, uh, pictures of released the suspect vehicle the other day, um, appears that it came from a residence. I don't know a residence, I'm not gonna divulge it if I did, but, um, obviously that helped the police in identifying that vehicle because of those cameras on home.
Very true.
I think that's a, I think that's a good idea, you know, it's hard to say, but, uh, the other thing is like, we're speaking, you know, you're having to speak. Um, but is there gonna be anything done about, like, any of the problems that we've been, nobody's addressed this back. Is, are you gonna be addressing it back later in the meeting as far as what you have done so far? Like, whether it's for this gentleman or myself, are they doing anything about, are they gonna do anything about the deer this year? Cause, uh, from what I understand is like, there's not even gonna be a vote about it or anything this year, is that true?
It hasn't been decided because the committee has a meeting, and as we mentioned last time, they're gonna be working out, and nothing's gonna happen until the deer season would be in the fall anyways, even if decisions were made, it probably would be addressed maybe in a year.
Okay.
We discussed that last time you were here at Discussable, you know, the public council people who stepped up to pick up the ball where it was left on last time.
Okay, so, so is there, is there another committee assigned to it yet, or?
Not a specific committee, but there, there will be a committee.
That possibly something will happen this year, or fall?
Something, it will be still there, some sort of plan to be brought out.
Okay, thank you.
Cause the deer actually are also are sick. A friend of mine has several deer that come in her backyard, and she, they're sick. Some of them, not all of them, but they're sick, they're lethargic, they're, um, I actually saw it for my own eyes, is that the one, the one deer had diarrhea all over it, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's not, it's not a good problem, but. All right?
Let's do housing first, and we have a guest here, if you wanna go to housing.
If you wanted to do housing, or let me do a presentation?
Yeah, well, I put it in her house.
Oh, okay, um, well, then why don't we let Gina go first, I will.
So, hi, I'm Gina Peridus, if you don't know me, I'm the executive director for the Chautauqua County Land Bank. Uh, we work county-wide as a land bank, um, I, I won't do Land Bank one-on-one tonight. Um, in the PowerPoint presentation that I printed for you guys, there's some background information on, um, how the land bank came into existence, why we exist, uh, what our mission is, et cetera, uh, and some background to, uh, where we've come thus far. This year, we're celebrating our tenth anniversary. Um, we were created as one of the first five land banks in New York State, um, back in two thousand and twelve, there are now twenty-eight land banks across the state. Primarily, our mission is to help, um, help fight issues of blight in the communities around the county. Um, we work very, very closely with all the municipalities. I would say that I probably spend about sixty-five percent of my time with the city of Jamestown, and probably another thirty percent of my time with the city of Dunkirk, um, and the balance, um, and the balance with, uh, the rural communities that, that we try to help with various, uh, issues. Over the last ten years, uh, we've had some pretty good successes, I think that have been shared throughout the county. Um, you know, I really have tremendous support from, uh, both citizens and the public sector, I have nothing to complain about there. Um, but, you know, I always say it's one, one house at a time, um, wish we could do more. Uh, housing is a very, very expensive thing to intervene. Um, we've got critical issues throughout the county, and it's very, very, uh, difficult for municipalities to have the resources, uh, much less the land bank. But what we're trying to do is really, really leverage what we're, what we're doing uh, to make sure that we're very strategic about our acquisitions, about our dispositions, about our programming, and make sure that we're leveraging not only what the municipalities are spending on, um, on housing issues, but also what other nonprofits are doing. We really try to ensure that we're collaborating and coordinating our efforts, uh, with both the public and the private sector. Um, I am coming, uh, to the, the council and, and the housing committee with a request for funding for, uh, some additional programming. Um, my ask is rather significant probably when you compare it to other programs. However, um, when you look at, uh, the size of the issues that we have going on, the amount of collaboration that we have been doing with the city, we have a wonderful partnership here going. And these programs that I'm, uh, asking for funding support for will only leverage the programs that the city's doing and what the other, uh, housing agencies in the county are, are doing. Just for some background in terms of, of our commitment to the city, over the last ten years, um, we have invested over eleven million dollars into the city of Jamestown. Um, this comes in the form of our sales for rehab program. The number of, uh, assessed value that we put back on the tax rolls is around, um, how shall I say? It's, um, about two point five million in assessed value from our rehab program. And, um, sorry, you can't see anything without my glasses anymore. Um, and, um, about five point nine million in, um, private reinvestment. So when we sell a house to someone, they have to commit to a renovation plan, we're not just selling it like the auction and hoping for the best. Uh, someone has to give us a renovation plan or renovation budget, that becomes part of their sales contract. So they have to do what they ask, what they say they're gonna do, or we can take the house back. And we also have a performance escrow that we hold on that renovation plan until it's completed. Um, so there's a number of drawbacks there that, that we use to just ensure that, that we get what people promise us. We do try to ensure that we're building homeownership, and the programs that I'm talking about today, um, are really meant to bolster that. And also to help facilitate home buying and homeownership to those communities that really haven't had access to our program and to other home buying opportunities in the past. Um, so we're really trying to, uh, try to right that, um, ill that's been, been done through years and years of systemic, uh, systemic issues with the banking industry, the housing industry, and, in, in general. Uh, we've put, uh, two point seven million dollars into the demolition of almost a hundred homes in, uh, Jamestown over the past ten years. We know that there's a glut of, uh, structure, sound, and, uh, blighted properties that need to come down. Um, they need to come down for safety reasons, they need to come down to, uh, to keep the taxpayers' dollars down in trying to deal with, um, the types of illicit activities that are attracted and the fire and safety hazards that come with these derelict properties. Um, so we've made a really big commitment to demolition for that reason, just to make neighborhoods safer and to, uh, try to stem the tide of some of the big problems that come with vacant and abandoned properties. Um, you know, we don't have to say how these properties affect, uh, home values in neighborhoods, but beyond that, they just destabilize a neighborhood and a community. They are cancer. Um, one bad house on an otherwise good block can bring it all down if you don't take care of it soon enough. So that's what we try to do, we try to maximize our impact by strategically looking at our acquisitions. Um, we get most of our acquisitions through the foreclosure sale, um, through the county, and we work very, very closely with city government to make sure that the homes that we're choosing to have come to us uh, make sense from a strategic standpoint. What, and we have a whole list of criteria that I'd be happy to share with you some other time. Um, but, uh, but we look for those houses that either relate to other programs that are going on, that are close to other houses that we've impacted in that neighborhood so that we can start spreading that impact across the neighborhoods through the city. Um, and we can't do that without the cooperation and the collaboration that we have with the city. Um, the city's been a phenomenal partner thus far, um, and that's why we have sunk so much grant funding into this community and tried our best to be a good partner as well. Um, we need help right now, uh, we have, um, our grant funding for land banks statewide had a funding gap, um, where the state didn't have any dedicated funding for us, uh, through COVID, after COVID. We had no inventory, so I couldn't generate any sales revenue because I had no houses to sell. Um, we are right now at a standpoint where we do not have demo funding. We still have houses in the pipeline that weren't finished when we ran out of funding. So we have those houses, and we've also, um, just picked up, uh, from this foreclosure, we've picked up twenty-three more rehabs and thirty-four more demos, uh, to be done. The estimated cost, um, for doing thirty-four demos is about nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Um, and that's basically just a pasta demo, and that doesn't even include all the mowing, maintenance, boarding, security. The cost for my rehabs just to hold them until I can sell them for the mowing, security, marketing, et cetera, um, is over a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So the, these are costs that I'm gonna incur this year, just this year. So my funding request is for, uh, the full four years. Um, it will be augmented by the grant funding that I am writing to the state for. They, they have set aside funding, thankfully, for the land banks this year, so we have not gotten the, um, funding request except for a small portion of it yet, we're expecting that in the next month or so. Any money that we can show that the city is pledging to the land banks for these programs can be leveraged. My, my demolition funding for this city has been around five to seven hundred thousand dollars a year that I gas for for grant funding. Demolition is in cheap, there's no way to make money on demolition. It's, it's money out of pocket, down the drain, um, and you hope for a good outcome by getting a vacant lot back on the tax rolls at a fraction of the cost that the house, uh, generated. So it's expensive, housing interventions are expensive. But what you get out of them, the stability that you bring to a neighborhood, the, um, the confidence building that it brings to a neighborhood, um, the additional investments that it brings to a neighborhood. When you see one or two houses start, start rossoming on your street, you know, people are gonna start cutting their lawns, they're gonna start painting their houses when they see improvements along their street. Um, that's not gonna happen if they have vacant and abandoned homes, um, all along their street. So I'll leave it there for now, but I'm happy to answer questions before, after, during, um, whenever. But I hope you will take this into consideration with the request. Um, the request is basically for several different programs. The largest piece of it is the demolition to help us get through and help us leverage that as we ask for more funding from the state. And then, um, you know, you're familiar with our Hands-on Neighborhoods program, we're really looking to expand that. Um, you know it right now is just the cleanup events, it was always meant to be more than that. Um, but with COVID, we couldn't do a lot of the one-on-one, uh, programming that we had really hoped to. Um, our SEPTED program, which you probably haven't heard a whole lot about yet, but hopefully you saw in the paper, Matt was our first graduate, um, actually second graduate, of the SEPTED program. SEPTED stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's a multidisciplinary approach to crime prevention in the neighborhoods and in the community. Um, Matt went through on a scholarship from the land bank, uh, to become certified in SEPTED, and he'll be helping me and the rest of the crew, we're gonna have five, uh, certified trainers or practitioners, uh, by the time we're, we're done, hopefully by the end of the year, uh, that can do workshops in the neighborhoods and teach both residents and community, uh, civic groups, et cetera, how they might make their properties safer by doing some, some fairly, um, common sense type things with their landscaping. You know, it's all, it's about the physical environment and making things safer through your physical environment. Uh, so that's part of the expansion of the Hands-on Program. Our First-Time Home Mentoring Program is the other element that we're really excited about. Um, we will be creating a, um, large volunteer cohort that will, uh, offer first-time, um, homebuyer mentoring. So when people go through their first-time home-buying course, that kinda helps them become creditworthy, become credit-ready and financial, um, financially ready to enter into a mortgage situation and buy their first home. Um, what it doesn't really do for them is really teach them about what it means to be a homeowner and what some of the challenges to homeownership is and how to maintain that asset over time. Homeownership is the core asset that generational wealth is built on. Without owning a home, people are not going to pull themselves up by their own strength and get out of poverty. It's just not gonna happen. This is meant to supplement or augment the homeownership programs that the city's doing, the first-time homebuyer programs that the other home agencies are doing, COI, CRI. Um, people coming out of those programs who do buy their first home will be mentored for the first year. Um, they'll learn things like how to make a home maintenance plan for the long term, how to budget for that home maintenance plan, how to be a good neighbor, how to access community resources when they have an issue. And that mentor will become their go-to person for any issues that they have during that first year. And more likely, like it has done so in Habitat for Humanity, um, they'll become a friend for life and, you know, a mentor, uh, for the long term for, for that person. Um, so that's a program that we're really excited about. I know I'm probably going on here, um, so I'll leave it at that, um, the details are, are in your paperwork. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
One question, can you send the slides, PowerPoint?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Until I find it.
Yeah, but it would be much easier.
Yeah, I'm happy to send it to Tony or, um, whatever it is.
We'll get it, yeah, if you send it to Mikael, we'll pass it forward.
Quick, quick question for you, looking at the analysis of its estimated cost, we have two cost breakdowns for over two hundred thousand. One is personnel, you have direct labor, explain to me, direct labor, is that your staff?
Yes. Direct labor. Yeah, personnel would be, um, yes, salaries, staff salaries.
Okay. And the contracts and subcarities are specifically?
That is specifically the, that's actually, yeah, for the, um, for the rebates, um, for the home improvements, um, in that program that I was speaking of. Um, that would be directly towards paying the home improvement, uh, rebates. And that's a matching program, um, that would have a not-too-exceed level of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
But it would be matched, uh, based on money already spent by the homeowner, so.
I think I got my question answered, thank you.
Thank you.
If you had to demolish a home in Jamestown, what's the average cost to do that?
According to this, twenty-seven thousand.
About twenty-seven, but it was more expensive during COVID, like everything else, but, um, but overall, I would say that I've been around twenty-seven with some of my.
Number up here is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents for thirty-six gallons. Sorry, did my math.
It's fine. You better write it the name, you know. As an average, most of the houses around here require some special equipment. So, yeah, not all of them. We're lucky every once in a while, but it's not, it's not common.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, for the executive work for the County Land Bank, correct?
Yes.
The title and information is available. All right, I'll do, we had no resolutions, but briefly had conversations which were very enlightening. Most of the thing was that public safety and housing and housing conditions, the violence, because of the environment that people are subject to living in. And kind of as Debbie brought up again, that people are the victims of what's in their neighborhood or what's not in their neighborhood. Talked about code enforcement, which is a big issue in terms of the neighborhoods that tend to have more public safety issues. And talk about additional hiring of people to deal with code enforcement. Obviously, what we heard from the Director of Development and ZAD, they are really strapped in terms of they have three code enforcement officers. And I believe, did you say they were handling up to three hundred cases?
They're averaging about one eighty, but they've got anywhere between one eighty and two hundred pieces.
Two hundred, thank you. One eighty to two hundred, so adding, you know, additional sweeps in the areas would be very difficult without hiring additional staff. It was also brought up about the homeless population that we are now seeing more and more in the downtown area. It was pointed out that this is not new. There's been a homeless coalition for over fifteen years. It's tried to address the problem along with many not-for-profits who are part of the homeless coalition. The moratorium that was lifted on homeless, or excuse me, the moratorium that was lifted on evictions has now created more of a homeless problem in the city because those individuals are no longer housed where they were not paying rent and utilities. So we're seeing more and more on the streets. I believe the police, public safety have been down trying to address the issue. I know the city has been down there offering assistance and giving resources and information to the individuals who have been there. So they're much too, um, I, I guess what I want to point out is even though it may appear that not much is being done, a lot is being done to try to reach out and help these individuals. But there's more to come and people have to be willing to accept the help and accept the terms and conditions sometimes of being housed in situations that they'd rather prefer not to abide by the rules. And that's creating some of the homelessness as well. So along with, you know, there are health and mental health issues. It was mentioned that there are agencies that try to do peer support and have tried to reach out and help the individuals. But again, it's a willingness on their part to accept the assistance. Some people have been housed with family or friends and have lost the housing, which is also added to the homelessness issue when they come here. They may have had initial housing, but then lost it and now they have nowhere to go. So we will continue to be looking at it. I know the mayor has talked about this issue as well. And I know there are a number of organizations that continue to need to try to address the issue of how we handle and how we can help the individuals. There is clearly not enough housing, but at this point to support all those individuals. But I know everything's being done to try to help and get them properly housed. With winter months coming up, that will be another issue. And I know there are code blue. The police staff, they will, the sheriff's department will help and assist after hours, but the SS is also available. So it's not going to resolve overnight, but it will continue to be addressed in a number of ways to a number of organizations in the city. So that was pretty much the, pretty much the meeting. So thank you, I was nothing else. Unless anybody has questions.
I have intentions of going down to the library and talking to some of the individuals down there myself. I think a lot of people, I could just flip out the window and have addressed the issue or talk to people. So I had intentions of going down there, talking to some of them and just see what their situation is. Are they from Jamestown? Are they come here from somewhere else? Did they have housing? Were they removed from housing and what the situation is? I'm not going to leave it up to others to do that, I'm going to do it myself. And if there's any other council members that want to join me to come down and, and have a chat and, and just see how we can help or what their situation is, then I would welcome that. I'm going to go down there, I'm going to check it out for myself.
I understand that this, for the time being, the buyer, the individuals are not down there at this point, but they indicated they have gone to another location.
They're down there.
They're down there. This is, this is what was said tonight.
I came up the hill, the place was empty. There wasn't a bed, there wasn't a chair, there wasn't a crackpot, there wasn't anybody. The police had been there earlier in the day around the lunch hour and three cars and three officers must have counseled these folks somewhat and moved them along because at five thirty, they were all gone.
That is, that is accurate. They provided resources. The mayor's standpoint is, I don't want to just shuffle people along and, and just, and pretend it's not an issue. But I would like to know what we're, what we're dealing with. And I don't want to have a conversation with individuals out, you know, a respectful conversation. And at the fact conversation, see, you know, where, where they've come from and, and what's going on with their situation. And Bill knows this, I mean, you, you get to know people when you're, when you're working as an officer on the streets. And obviously, even more than I have, but I don't recognize any of these people. Which tells me that they're probably not from around here. Because you get to know people who live here.
Regulars.
Yes, and, and I just, I'm not recognizing faces in it. So I, I guess I want to hear the, the stories for myself and see where that can lead us into this issue. Because if we don't do something about it and try to help these people or correct the issues that are going on, it's going to continue to get worse and worse. Last night I was down in Comedy Park, where the Comedy Center has a tent set up to do some different venue stuff back there. And someone went into the tent and destroyed a bunch of lighting that was in there, which now has to be all tore down and replaced. I'm not aware, I, I did also hear a story, and this is unconfirmed, that there was possibly some homeless individuals that broke into a local restaurant recently and made themselves dinner. All sat down, said grace, ate, shared a bottle of, three hundred dollar bottle of wine, washed, cleaned up the dishes, put it away and left and spent probably hours in this establishment. That's kind of a heartwarming story, but you also can't have people breaking into businesses and committing felony further either. So the issue definitely needs to be addressed. I also plan on reaching out to the city mission down on First Street. I do have a phone call into the director there and I'm going to kind of pick his brain and, and see what, where he's coming from on this issue.
Thank you.
We have quite a few resolutions. I will summarize them as best I can. First resolution was designating an additional one million dollars in no sense in ARPA funding for the purpose of a building and property infrastructure improvement program to be administered through JLBC and JIRA. This is ARPA funds that was passed through Finance.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Crystal is, at one time, you passed this list out with the WOOPR matrix. I think we were looking for specific projects, what's, I know I clarified some of them that there were rebates for some of the COVID issues, but I think some of us on council were looking for actually what these companies were, what they were actually planning on doing. And I, I see you have a sample of your matrix, but you filled all those out for each one.
I can give you all of this? If this is what you would, I'm happy to. I think you have a JLBC meeting coming up to go through these.
I don't know if we need all the minutia on that, but maybe what the project is.
I think just a couple lines, somewhere you got to.
You know, with awesome metal or sauce, they, they're not getting rebates or partial rebates, but are they putting awnings up, new tables, chairs, are they paying down their?
I got you.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, here you are.
All right. We were looking for.
One was prepared for JLBC, so we'll get that out to the city council.
I got it right here. So these are split into two spreadsheets. One is specifically for manufacturers and then one is split into the other service industry restaurants, that sort of thing. This is super basic. It's just a one line that says specifically what it is. I can give you more of a, like a narrative? I guess should answer the most questions that people have.
I think for many of these projects, you're not talking about a lot of complicated things. Basic things, yeah.
Oh, no, that's fine. So that being said, you can use Crystal's summary format for what was approved, what was not approved, what is suggested for the rounds, and then go to your backup for what the exact project is. And if you, I would suggest if you have any more specific comments, questions or details that you need personally, and you're not a member of the JLBC, that you reach out to Crystal and ask for that information. Okay? Resolution number two, designating an additional two million dollars in no sense in ARPA funding communities and neighborhood funds for the purpose of funding the roof, private sewer lateral, private water line repair replacement program administered through the JLBC and the Jamestown Urban Renewal Agency. This, many of us have heard from many constituents who were on the list and wanted and requested us to approve additional funding. So I'm happy to say that that did pass through Finance.
Just a quick question on that. What was the, I have a mayor, Crystal, what was the total dollar amount again for the need or the request applications?
For the roofing?
It was, so it was a little bit more than I think the two million will fill.
Right.
Give me one second and I can tell you. But that was before you denied some of them, I think? Um, yes, that's even after. Okay. Yep.
I mean, it obviously far exceeded what we approved last time then.
I may have to go look that up. Sorry, we, we, for the exact amount, we've already approved how much?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep. So this will bring the total to two point, two point seven five million? Yep, and actually now it's coming back to be, the, the need was about two point nine. So this will get us very, very close.
Thank you.
And this will cover remaining ones that we want to say.
Yep.
And just for the media or the public that might be watching it, I did field some phone calls in the last couple of weeks along with Kim as far as people that might have been denied or their requests were questionable and their. I suggest that those people, if this resolution passes later on in the month, I recommend that you make phone calls and continue to, uh, to push to have your, the project done if, if this amount passes. So if you were denied the first time, if there was questionable, please, uh, please make some phone calls or, or ask for your application to look again.
Can I say something? Please don't call. If you were denied, you will, this will allow us to approve all of those maybes.
Okay.
Anyone that was denied specifically because they were ineligible are still ineligible.
Okay.
Uh, for whatever the reasons are. We do have the spreadsheet that explains, and that was only a handful. It was a very small amount. Anybody that was a maybe, they're already going to be approved.
I know one gentleman, he was complaining that he felt that, that his roof should have been looked at while someone was home and that he should have been able to speak to someone rather than someone just coming by looking at, taking some pictures and, and moving on.
Yeah, I, I'll be honest, the roofs, everybody that needed a roof, either they really needed a roof or there were a few that were somewhat questionable. But the roofs were, I mean, the roofs are a big, big problem here, so.
Sure, I mean, I explained to him that if, if the shingles were fifteen or twenty years old, but they still looked okay, someone that has a hole in the roof and has an active leak is obviously going to be approved.
Yep, the first thirty applications that were approved in the initial round were desperate need.
Severe, yes.
Very, very severe.
Majority of them had tarps, river holes.
Yeah.
That's the types of roofs they eventually approved.
And that's why we pushed so hard to, to request additional funding because the, the need is real. This program will help a lot of people. So, thank you.
And for the record, this will be voted on next week.
Next week. Okay, resolution number three, that Jamestown City Council designate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in no sense in American Rescue Plan Act Neighborhood Stabilization Funds for the purpose of creating a permanent nineteen-eight homeownership program. This was tabled in essence for some more information to come from the Corporation Council and Assistant Corporation Council. We had some questions on this. We want to make sure that facility interests are protected on that as well.
It's just for clarification, if you, if he has any information, will be in here in a minute.
I'm not sure, I guess, wasn't an indication of that, so I don't know. Can't answer that. I didn't, I don't really been standing by and getting that all together.
I should probably do it before I.
I think we can get it done.
Resolution number four, designating up to three thousand, three hundred thousand dollars. And no sense in American Rescue Plan Act Economic Development Funds for the purpose of funding the citywide marketing and revanning campaign to be administered through the Jamestown Local Works Development Corporation, Jamestown Urban Renewal Agency. This did not pass funding at all, so it's not coming out of that.
Can I speak to that, Madam Chairperson? Is there another way for that to be made, able to be voted on? Is there another committee that it's been?
Someone can bring it through as a new business resolution or bring it forward, but I will tell you, the Finance Committee felt with all the problems that we have going on between homes and public safety, that we would rather see that, we would go directly to that one.
I don't, if I can just talk for a minute, you might have seen the letter from, I believe, John Whitaker, the editorial, talking about some heyday programs that may have been done primarily to push downtown and to push the Comedy Center and all that it has to offer here in our great city and reaching out into the Netherlands to try to get people to come here. I think the attempt for this branding initiative is more to be positive, to sell what we have that is good. Our businesses, our BPU, our schools, our public safety, our fire and our very inexpensive housing taxes, I guess is a, is a negative. But we need to start twisting things, spinning things that this is a great city. It's a great place to be. And I don't, we're not going to. It's a great place to be and I don't, we're not going to hire a person. You've seen social media do amazing things with 20-year-olds sitting in their basement making millions of dollars in a podcast. I just, I, I really think that, that this 300,000 represents 1% of this ARPA money. And everything seems to be putting fires out and fixing things and spending money on capital projects. I really truly believe that this branding initiative, no matter how it's laid out and who does it, is a matter to, to find out. But I think it's an opportunity for us to really sell the positiveness of what the city represents. I know John mentioned the failure of the last two with need of hundreds of thousands of marketing dollars. I don't think you need that in today's age with all the social media that's available. So I'm a big proponent of trying to spin the good that we have to offer, not only our residents, but those who may become our residents or move their factories here, whether it's for cheap electricity or for a building site that's available and can get in, even with Gina's business and the Lane Bank business. I had the good fortune of working a deal, but I, I really think we shouldn't just not have a discussion on it. So maybe, maybe it'll be brought up for new business.
I, I, I beg to differ on that point because the point about public safety and blighted houses, no matter what you put out there, if that's the first impression of what people see, it's not going to encourage them to come here.
Well, that, that won't be part of this.
Yeah, I know, but if somebody drives here to look to come live here and the first thing they see is some of the conditions of the gateways coming down North Main Street, do you think they're going to really want to move here because everybody said everything's great? I, I, I bet that's my problem with spending money. When we have blighted houses, homes that need to be remodeled, homes that need to be repaired, and people can't afford it to spend money on this when it, it might be 30 more roofs. Um, it might help somebody get, you know, something else, the porch that's falling down here. There are a lot of things that are not attractive to people coming through and putting out an image of this is great, everything's wonderful, is for nothing when people actually break through and hear it from a number of people talking about it. So that's my, that's my argument against this is that branding will not fix what people see when they come here. No matter where they come from out of town or live here, I've been getting complaints for over a year about the housing condition. Everybody that confronts me is like, what are you doing about the housing, the conditions of housing, the poor conditions of houses on their streets around the corner?
But we're making headway in that regard.
I, I can tell you what DM's talking about, what everything that's going in the Department of Development isn't going to fix half of what needs to get fixed here. And you've got homeless people that you can't house. That's what people are seeing right now. Branding isn't going to change.
Okay. Any other questions on that resolution before we move on? Okay, resolution number five is that Officer Jeremy Maggio and Alexis Carlson are authorized to attend the DCJS School Resource Officer Course to be held August 21st through August 26th, 2022 in Mount Morris, New York with meals, lodging, and gas expenses paid pursuant to Section 77 via of the general municipal laws of the state of New York, and this is funded through the Jamestown Police Department Budgetary Funds. That was approved. Resolution number six, the mayor is authorized to execute, execute change order number one with Arpaty Concrete Excavating LLC of Jamestown for concrete work on May Street, Camp Street, to East Virginia Boulevard and the amounts of increasing, uh, concrete curb and gutter for a total increase in the change order dated August 17th, 2022 of 146,700 dollars in no sense, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form, and this is funded through CHIPS. It's approved. Resolution number seven is resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute an agreement with signature paving and seal coating of Jamestown for concrete work 2022 on Gwendolyn Avenue based on the bid opening of August 3rd, 2022 for a total bid amount of 174,900 dollars in no sense, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form, and this is funded through ARPA. That was approved. Number eight, City of Jamestown in its bidding process for the purchase of motor oils and lubricants used in the city vehicles and equipment, the City of Jamestown has determined that in an effort to control costs and for predictable budgeting, therefore be it resolved that the Director of Public Works is authorized to purchase motor oils and other lubricants from Superior Lubricants of North Tonawanda effective September 1, 2022 through August 31st, 2024, with the option to extend the pricing through August 31st, 2025, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form, and this is a general fund budget expense over the course of the years. That was approved. Resolutions nine and 10 are going to fall into, we had some more questions, not that we didn't approve the, the whole process. Council has suggested to the controller that with the given concerns hitting the contingency that we reduce the amount out of the contingency to 75,000 on resolution number nine and that we increase what's coming out of ARPA. Concern is with the expenses. As you all will hear, our sales tax was down. The increase in costs just a general over concern of not attacking the entire contingency and leaving us in a situation at the end of the year. So those are going to be revised and rewritten as such and introduced as new business for the voting session. So you will all see those come under new business.
Tim, was there already money in the question? Because those two amounts do not equal.
There was already a payment. 37,000.
It was rescue plan funds that already were approved. It came in, it came in higher because of asbestos.
Yep.
So this is just an increase in the, in the ARPA funds and then also a little bit that's 75,000 dollars that contingency funded.
Thank you.
So it's to make up.
The concern was the contingency could be down to 123. 123 with four months ago.
So this will at least make a little bit more. Uh, in theory, they passed. Finance is just a little reworking of the numbers between the two. Resolution number 11 is that the mayor is authorized to execute an agreement with Paramount Roofing of Faulkner for the Parks Department roof replacement based on the bid opening of May 11th. The total amount is 445,650 dollars in no sense, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form. That was approved. Resolution number 12 is for a hiring freeze that currently exists to release that to, to re, to fill a vacancy in the Department of Public Works for a laborer. This position is vacant due to the result of a transfer and there were some questions raised, so we are calling for an executive session for council after personnel.
I have that on my list, yep.
And then the other two items we have are informational only. I will touch on the first one now that I can touch on the rest. In your package, you all had an update of the ARPA funding of all that has been approved and all that is new projects for this week for a total spend of 19,881, 713,000.
19 million. A lot more to go.
Eighty-one, seven hundred and three. So broadly about 10 million left. That does include the 300,000 that was not approved through finance. Okay, and then Ron, John, I'll let you speak on the, to the more sales staff.
We're just a little shy of meeting our goal for what we projected for the previous year. We're down, but overall for the half the year, we are up $59,000. For the entire year, sorry. For the entire year, we've collected 47.6% of our quarterly budget so far for the half the year compared to last year, where we collected 56.8% at the same time. We did however, increase the amount that we were projected to receive, so that goes slightly.
So basically the second quarter, we're still slightly ahead of budget. Still ahead. So I guess the big concern is, yeah, I mean, but the third quarter will look like we couldn't tell which direction we're going in for the rest of the year, so that's kind of a, not saying it's a red flag, but it's,
It's an indicator to cautious.
It's the first time in several quarters that we've seen a, a slight decrease compared to the last couple of years where it's been ticking up.
That was it out of finance.
And we'll move on to public safety. Ron?
President, we can remember to the public, they also spoke during our full works session. We did also approve the resolution authorizing Officer Jeremy Alexis Carlson to attend the School Resource Officer Course, which is probably a big history. Um, we approved two special event program applications. One was RETool 22, Climate Technology Conference. They can help cover 18 and 19, so it's an ARPA program on Second Street. We discussed this two weeks ago. We didn't have all the department approval at that time. We do have those now, so that's approved. And we also approved the annual Dan Feather Memorial Five Favors to be held September 4th, 16:30 a.m., 11:30 a.m. It's our first line on Baker Street. It's pointed out by Councilmember Reynolds that it's been a few years since the foster father, the foster father passed away. I know nobody would like to respond to that. President, will you participate?
I unfortunately will give you guys a chance to admit, because they're not being talented.
You won't be there. Oh, we did have, the police chief jets, it had announced that two suspects are being held in custody for the failed shooting with Kirk Friday, American District Attorney. The charges are still being worked out at the district attorney's office and more information will be coming. We did have a round of applause from the people that were held safe, and that was enough. Thankful for the good work and quick arrests made by our offices and detectives.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to thank Mr. Pace and Mr. Champ for showing up and speaking about the violence and the city gun violence and the issues. Obviously you can see I'm frustrated about the situation. This is our city and people shouldn't be coming here thinking they can do what they want with our city. And we need to take a bet. That's about my neighbor, and it's got to start neighborhood by neighborhood, block by block, and basically tell these people that are coming here to sell their drugs, that are bringing their guns. You're not welcome here and we're going to push you out of there. And that means a zero, if we have to engage in a zero tolerance policy, make an arrest, target patrols. Like I said earlier, we have to have help from the public. I know people are nervous about coming forward, providing information. I use the term, I often heard on the streets from people, snitches get stitches, people are afraid to come forward. But if an entire block, our neighborhood bands together, they can't come after everyone. You know, they can't come after an entire city block in retaliation if we all stick together and work together on this issue and just basically say, you're not welcome here in Jamestown and we're pushing you out.
Public Works, same question as President. The, the resolutions in the Public Works Committee were also covered in finance and we approved all of them with the respect of the tweaking for the Parks Department. So there was, Missy Patadini spoke to us. She had some concerns and one of them was she wanted to know if there was a chance for a study for a roundabout intersection at, two of them she was wondering about, one at the intersection of Baker and Hazel Time Rader for South School and the other one would be at Buffalo Street and East Second. And there was concerns, we talked to the directors and, you know, pedestrian crossing is always tricky with roundabouts. So we will at least discuss it further. I mean, it's a big undertaking. You've got to have land acquisitions and get the state involved for sure, but she had mentioned that and it's something that we can at least discuss in the future. Other than that, I believe that was our.
Any other questions before we go to the mayor? Just a brief thing. I just wanted to mention the public forum. The other night in the press conference, we've been talking about having a public forum. Wanted to set the date on that. It's going to be September 14th, which is a Wednesday. We're still working out details as to the exact time and location. The purpose of the forum, and I was, I was planning on calling this before, and of course now I think there's a little bit more sense of urgency with the recent uptick in gun violence in particular. I've asked the Director of Development as well as the Police Chief to be there, talk about issues, specifically the neighborhood issues, housing issues, many of the things we touched upon tonight. And the Police Chief can talk about targeted areas, what's being done, what can be done in the future, what more can we do, just to have more of an open dialogue. You know, our work sessions and voting sessions, we have such large agendas that we have to get through there. You know, people have five minutes and it's kind of back and forth and we don't have a lot of time to have dialogue. So the purpose of the forum is to get as much information out from the mayor, from the department head that are there as possible. Council people are obviously invited to be there, to chime in, answer questions, make comments. But it gives the public a chance to ask questions and have more dialogue with the administration as well as the council and to get information out there about what's going on, what's not going on, and what steps can we move, take moving forward. And as we said the other night, now this is not just a Jamestown problem, this is a state problem. It's a nationwide problem. If you look at every city in this country, across the state, there's been a huge uptick in violence, violent crime, gun crime. And there's, you know, we can point fingers all we want and this is a, you know, it's a complex issue, but what are we going to do here in Jamestown? What can we do to at least deal with it and work on it moving forward? And so that's the purpose of the forum is to get people to have a chance to answer, ask questions, get answers, see what's going on, see what more we can do, so in the next few weeks we can, you know, put together some plans and, and moving forward and what we can do. So there'll be more information coming out. We'll still have to figure out exactly where and what time and so on and so forth. So more will come out, probably have an announcement next week, voting session on that.
It might be worth, that was a headline in Buffalo paper today, where gun violence starts to drop in Buffalo, started with new techniques and hotspots. And what they are finding that in spite of the shooting attacks, their numbers have gone down and they've gone back to foot patrols, that they have actually started to get officers in the hotspots to try to talk to the residents, to encourage relationship building again. And I think Doug Camp mentioned it, having, at one time they had a substation out in, on May Street. And maybe this is, you know, it wouldn't hurt, it would not hurt to get somebody from that police department to also come down and talk about what's working for them because I had no idea and I would not have believed it, but that included the 10 people who were shot at five. Their numbers are still dropping in Buffalo.
I mean, just to follow on that, you know, the state, they can pass all the gun laws they want. And more than that, it's going to, it's going to affect the legal gun owner, the gun owner that's responsible. Some of these people are, they're criminals. They don't care about the law. They, they don't care about what laws. Come from Albany, they're still going to get their guns. A little reminder of Officer David Mitchell that was shot in 1999, was shot by a gun that was stolen out of a burglary and went, passed through four or five, six different hands, made it into the hands of James Lewis who then turned around and shot Officer Mitchell. So criminals don't care about laws. That's why. So criminals don't care about laws, that's why they're criminals. So we can pass all the gun laws we want, but that doesn't matter. What's disheartening to me, and I said this earlier prior to the council all convening together, is when we have someone that shoots multiple rounds into a car in the city. And I know this drum has been beat many times, but shoots multiple rounds into a car that's fleeing. And the individual that shoots those rounds into a car is released thirteen hours later. Thirteen hours later, after pumping multiple rounds into a car, this person that is clearly a danger to society is walking our streets. And this is happening time and time and time again with a new bail reform. I understand that the bail reform was not, I understand why it happened. Bail was never set up as a punishment, wasn't meant to be a punishment towards people who spend in jail. But with this bail reform that happened, they went too far. We have people that are dangerous to our community, that are committing felonies, multiple felonies, and they're getting out of jail hours later. And that are walking our streets again. Something needs to be done on a state level. The governor had a possibility to change this, she chose not to. People should be ringing her phone and knocking on her door to repeal some of this bail reform. We, the citizens, are now becoming the victims of this bail reform, because nothing's being done.
Hello, everyone, Councilman Russell, there's a congressional seat open, currently open, so if you want to jump in, the water's hot right now.
The election's tomorrow.
That's a good point, don't forget there is an election tomorrow, special elections. And the primary, all at the same time. I just wanted to provide a couple of updates, and I have a couple of other folks that will add some information to you all. First and foremost, I was asked specifically about the homelessness problem, I know Councilman Ethel, you raised it. Councilman Russell, I want to thank you for being, being willing to go in and talk to folks. There's a couple of things that I want to address, as Councilman Karuba had mentioned, there is a challenge that we are facing now that we've not seen in a very long time, which is the issue of rent and people being evicted from their apartments. We have an issue of the location of the city compared to other things, our cost of living, our weather, and shelters being at capacity right now. So you have the perfect storm of people that are existing on our streets. The one thing that I would also note is that when you go, Councilman Russell, and you do talk to these folks, you will find that the majority of them are families. They are not originally from Jamestown, they've found themselves in Jamestown for some reason or other. And don't have a place to go, because there are shelters that won't take families, or you have to separate, or they have an animal that they don't want to give up, right? But I want to just talk to you briefly about the actions that we are taking as a city to address this issue. First and foremost, as you've noted, you all noted that we have had times where we have moved individuals out of areas. But keep in mind, every time you shift someone out of an area, they go somewhere else, right? So we're seeing folks, as we shift out of more visible areas, you're seeing more people end up in our parks, you're seeing more people end up under other areas. And so we're trying very hard to try to keep up with that. At the same time, we're providing resources, you've mentioned the beat patrols. We send out foot patrols down to provide resources. We also work with our partners at CLI, with the UK Mission, with the Salvation Army Domestic Violence, and others who have also gone down there. Talked to those individuals, provided them resources. We've also been working with the county for individuals that may be here and don't have the funds to get back to wherever they wanted to go. There's a special fund designated by the county that will provide them a ticket, a bus ticket to wherever they need to go. So on top of all of that, we're working with the shelters whenever there's any open available bed. I also want to note that in early September, it looks like we're getting closer to finding a time to bring the county's homelessness coalition directly here to Jamestown for an in-person meeting. We have a coalition, Councilman Karuba, as you had mentioned, and we wanted to make sure that we engage them. Their entire goal has really been to focus on funding and on-the-ground support. And so I personally went to that group and made a plea and said, you need to be in Jamestown. Right, what are, what good are you as a group if you are not physically here, helping the people that we have? So we will be convening a meeting of that group, once we have that date set, which should be by tomorrow. We will invite all of you to join. We will also be inviting our churches, which have played an active part in supporting some of this work. And I also want to note, one other action is that we have seen churches come in and feed various homeless populations, preach, provide services. Those churches, we have spoken to, we've met with, they've moved services away from those areas and provide them in a much more safer location. So they're still able to do some of the missionary work they're looking to do and provide the support. But we can't have them hanging out in certain areas that are really going to impact where people are staying, right? Areas that really are unsafe, especially near the viaduct, and we have buildings that could potentially fall down. There's a reason why we block some of those things there. So we're doing everything that we can to try to move people out, provide resources and support them. And the same token, I encourage you all to talk to those individuals. I've done it, I encourage you all to do it. And if you have any suggestions or solutions, please let us know. We're trying to do the best we can. We have some great staff members on our Parks Department, DPW, that have been out there trying to help individuals that have cleaned up, that have tried to improve the area. But there's only so much that we can do at the same time. So I appreciate whenever you all provide me updates, I'm able to get those to our staff. And we're working diligently to make sure that we are compassionate for those folks that are there, but also to protect public safety and the public in those areas. I will note, just to give you an update on the viaduct area, which has been the major one, most people have looked at. I, Council.
Councilman Reynolds.
Uh, Councilman Reynolds, I was just going to call you Bill there for a minute, I apologize. Councilman Reynolds. And you had mentioned a bit about that area today. We, we did have our, our foot patrol go down and provide resources for individuals, move them out of the area. We had BPU assist us in cleaning up that area. We're working directly with the railroad about potential lighting in that area, that goes hand in hand with the SEPTED. The view that we're talking about. So I want you all to know, we are working on it, we're working diligently on it. I don't have a good answer, and the more I talk to other mayors that have done this in areas that have a much larger homelessness population, under much larger bridges and areas, they don't have a very good answer either. So we're trying the best we can to support those folks as well as protect those areas.
I can say that when I run the Riverwalk, I now have a nickname, and they sit on their benches, they call me Forrest, so. It's one of the things I've seen on a regular basis.
At least they're not offering you a box of chocolates.
Because I do see a lot of them, you know, running the Riverwalk in that area.
So if there are any other questions on that, please let me know, otherwise we will invite you all to have that, to sit down and join us with the Homelessness Coalition. A couple of the brief updates, and then I'd like to talk, I'd like to bring Lisa up to talk a bit about the Senior Housing Rescue Plan Program. First and foremost, you may have heard that the Inflation Reduction Act has been passed on a federal level. We are still waiting to just better understand how any funding could potentially flow to the city through that legislation. It was recently passed, we're still trying to figure out how that's going to happen, but we will keep you all up to date as we start to see other federal funding opportunities come into play due to that legislation. Some of that, in particular, Councilman Karuba, does have funding for climate change, which can be used for stormwater management and other, other concerns you've brought up in, over the years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't find it out.
Yes.
To you, me, so I just wanted to bring it up.
Yes, so there is some funding in there, we'll have to get to that. The other thing to note, on a New York State level, you may have seen the email I sent you about speed zones, in particular, the speed limit. New York State has now allowed municipalities, towns and villages, to lower their speed limit as low as twenty-five miles per hour. This is not in a school zone, those are still considered separate. So if there is any indication or inkling from the council to start to look at that, that would have to be a local law that would be passed that would change our speed zones from thirty down to twenty-five, or some mixture in between. Some communities have, places like Ithaca have been trying to change their speed zones to about twenty. But the highest, the lowest they can go now is twenty-five under, under the new New York State law. So if there's any, any thoughts on that, now's the time to discuss it. There's no specific time limit that I'm aware of, this can happen anytime, passing home rule legislation that could allow us to change those, those speed limits. And I do want to bring in, I've got just a couple more items, Lisa Wolf is here, to talk briefly about the Senior Housing Program, which we have received a tremendous amount of applications. This is for folks that have the aged or enhanced tax exemption and were eligible for repairs to their home. Lisa, if you want to give us an update to this, to the council?
Yeah, um, we had two hundred and ninety-six applicants. We had two hundred and ninety-six applicants for a total of one million seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, of which I have five hundred that we can spend now. I don't know, were we going to discuss the other five hundred thousand tonight?
I don't, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, is there anything else you want to talk about?
No, I don't have that.
So of, of that number, two hundred and ninety-six, twenty-seven are agent exemption, which means that they're below the twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-two thousand.
Below twenty-two thousand. And sixty-nine are enhanced star, so they meet the age threshold and under ninety.
Two.
Two thousand, okay. Of those applications, the two ninety-six, thirteen had applied for the roofing program. And will most likely get the roofing program, so we may pull them out of this program. And we have from that list, that two hundred and ninety-six, thirty-two disabled seniors and forty-six indicated they have chronic illness, difficulty. Again, one point seven million, we only have five hundred thousand. We have enough in the first trench of the five hundred thousand to do all of the agent exemptions, so individuals that are under the twenty-two thousand threshold. We're still talking about what to do with the rest to accomplish all of those, so we may end up coming back to the City Council. We still have another five hundred thousand that was allocated for a program for a tax rebate incentive. So there's some discussion on whether we want to move that into the senior program instead of a separate tax rebate program. And then see if we wanted to add additional more to make up the remainder. So we're working through that, but in the meantime, any recommendations that you all have on that would be greatly appreciated. I will have Zach send you all tomorrow the listing of all of the locations that have applied for that, that program.
On the application, yes, they asked if there was veterans or, I mean, veterans applied for this?
We did not ask about it.
We did, we did not, but we could pull if they've got a veteran exemption. Great, thank you. Any questions for Lisa? As a very popular program, with two hundred and ninety-six applications, there were, there were certainly a lot. And we wanted to try to accomplish as much as we can. So we probably will be coming back to the City Council to ask for your feedback on how you think we should handle the remainder of the program, so.
As of right now, is there any, like, the twenty-three, the least money are probably going to be selected first, is there any order after that? Is it for disabled people, or is there any particular order that you're looking at?
There's not an order yet, because we obviously, similar to the roof program, we're asking the City Council for, for a kind of advice on this process. But certainly we have enough for those that would be in the lowest income bracket, which is a high priority. Most of those items are, are high priority items that need to get done, less those that will receive the roof grant, assuming that gets passed on on that. We're working through it. Hopefully, we don't have to create a criteria that we could fund them all, or a majority of them, but obviously, there's decisions that have to be made in order to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Let me just make sure I have my list of items here. All right, and then I do have for you all, and this, Crystal is behind me over here, I'm going to pass out the, another ARPA program for a not-for-profit assistance program. One of the, I'm just going to preface this, then I'll let Crystal jump in for whatever she would like.
Sure.
Okay. One of the items that we received, we received a lot of requests, and many of those have been presentations to this City Council for funding for organizations that are in a not-for-profit capacity. As you may all, as you probably all note, all of the ARPA programs that have been passed so far, none of them apply to not-for-profits, right? So none of them would apply to an allocation, for example, to the zone, or to the Y, or to any other program to the public market that, that came in and presented to you all. So in an effort to try to work through a program to present and have funding, even a small amount for some of those programs, Crystal has created this not, nonprofit assistance program. I know Crystal's going to talk a bit about it.
Sure, it's very new. So if there are errors, let's just look at this as a draft. And my hope is that we can have some discussion when she's had a chance to digest. This was developed based on conversation that I've had with the mayor and President Dulce. And looking at what made the most sense to address those organizations that have come and requested funding. So that's where we pulled this together, we based a lot of it on the business grants that we've already had in development. So there's certainly some tweaking that can be done, nothing here is set in stone. We suggested that one point five million be allocated to the program, grants not exceed two hundred thousand. However, anything that might receive consideration for over two hundred thousand would be subject to a pilot agreement with the city. Details to be, I guess, determined, finalized based on discussion that we might have. So really, this is just introducing the program, what costs would be eligible, what costs would be ineligible, what organizations would be eligible. It is specifically designed for those nonprofit organizations, they would have to provide proof of that and provide all of that financial background and. And then the, the burden of proof of their hardship, because that is what the American Rescue Plan funds are, are meant to address, would be on the organization that applies. So they would still subject to the same sort of criteria that businesses and individuals are, are subject to. So you could look at that matrix that I handed out earlier, still would need to look at that and use that as a foundation for any evaluation that would be given to any of the applications. So they would still need to meet those sorts of criteria and provide the background on why the pandemic or how the pandemic impacted their organization, how they're going to use the funding to address their organization's recovery. And whatever sort of issues that they're trying to address as a nonprofit organization that would benefit the community and help assist the community in whatever ways the individual organizations do to also aid in recovery from the pandemic, so.
Thank you. So we were very, we want to be very clear on one thing, we recognize the comments from the City Council and others on the fact that not-for-profits don't pay taxes, right? That's been a big concern that we have heard, and so if we're providing this money, which we're legally able to, to not-for-profits, what, what does the city get in return, even though we're uh, what, uh, what does the city get in return, uh, even though we're still providing services? So in discussion with Crystal and I, uh, we said that if you do receive awards over two hundred thousand, again, this is a draft form, could talk about this a bit more, um, we would initiate a pilot program, which would mean you'd pay, the organization would pay, a percentage of what their tax burden would be as a not-for-profit. Okay? So we initially had some discussion about two point five percent of what your tax bill, uh, would normally have been, uh, as a, as a not-for-profit. Okay? So if you are taking funding over a certain amount of threshold, then there's some skin in the game, uh, for the city, and the city would get some return back on the services it already provides, uh, that organization.
I think that organizations would have to provide the justification and the background information for how, what our return on that investment would be, based on whatever services they're providing or whatever additional economic benefit it would provide. So they, they would be required to provide that quantification, um, as part of their application.
The only comment, looking through the [inaudible]. Prefer that organizations that have already gotten PPP loans, you said that they're not, um, that they are still eligible to apply, but I guess I would put them down in a lower category.
Sure.
If they've already gotten funding, because many got PPP loans that were forgiven, so they really got the funds. Where we got others that maybe were too small to apply and didn't get, and however your ranking, I think those organizations that did not, if, if they're going to extend this to not-for-profits,
Sure.
Give it to those who have not been able to take advantage of these other funding opportunities. Put them in a higher ranking, I guess, I'm, you know, uh, it just, I think it would be more fair.
Yep.
It's a good point.
Yep, so make sure that we, we add that into whatever the final, um, program looks like. I think that that makes sense.
Do you wanna see, read through it? Yep.
Some comments, suggestions, yep?
Yep, so like all the other programs, uh, digested, we'll follow up, uh, in a, in a bit, uh, with it for additional comments and thoughts. Like I said, we, you know, Cris- Crystal worked a tremendous amount on trying to put this together, uh, and so we both put our heads together and said, "What is one way we can ensure that we're at least getting some back, uh, from the programs?" Uh, we recognize that there's a huge community benefit for some of the work that these organizations are doing, uh, but there is some potential to recoup some of the services that the city also provides.
You take a question from your end.
I have a question. I've got a question. Are you guys looking at their finances of these organizations to, in terms of fund balance and also viability for [inaudible]?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, because I think they've got a significant amount of funding. They're just looking for [inaudible].
Yep, we would be looking at that. We'd be looking at, what is the, their proposed project or program that they want to apply for funding for? Is there a business plan of sorts associated with that? They'd be required to jump through the same kinds of hoops that we, we put businesses through.
No, I appreciate that, if there's a kind of rationale for any of this funding that it's going, and they're reasonable, and they've exhausted all of the options.
Yep, absolutely.
For one who's spent a lot of time with the American Rescue Plan as a citizen, I still am doing that. I still get communications being part of my treasure. Um, when you're dealing with not-for-profits, some of the guidelines and the regs, there's gotta be a delineation. The city is the recipient. Then they have sub-receivers.
That's correct.
Then they have beneficiaries.
Also correct.
All of that has been, has to be linked together to justify the investment in not-for-profits. Give you a quick example, the food kitchen. You need a new kitchen? They are a sub-recipient. The people that eat there are directly connected to that food kitchen are the recipients.
That's correct, yes.
It should not be a profit margin that establishes the necessity or the qualifications of use of American Rescue Plan. In other words, if they charge a mission to participate in the organization, that's a question mark. So if I wanna go and belong, I pay a fee of a lot. That has to be carefully analyzed in terms of justification on eligibility criteria.
We can certainly pin to it, Doug, and to, uh, to be honest, every grant recipient also signs a grant agreement with the city that delineate, delineates them as a sub-recipient, assigns them, uh, DUNES identification number if they don't have one, uh, and they have separate reporting requirements in addition to the city's reporting requirements to the treasurer. So those things are already happening. I understand your, your concern about admission, and we certainly will take that into account as we start to look at some of these programs. Uh, I have, uh, no other general items, uh, but I do have, uh, one, uh, or excuse me, I have, uh, three executive session items. One relating to an active law enforcement investigation and two personnel items.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask one question, please?
Of course.
Chris Allen's here in the audience. Allen, any, uh, word on the attendance or the program for retooling, uh, two thousand? Can you give us a little update on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Reynolds. Um, we are working very hard at beating our goal of over three hundred to come to Jamestown for the conference. Right now, we have about fifty, just early. Um, we expect, because, um, a lot of people went in before Labor Day to do their planning for fall, that, uh, that will pick up very shortly. Uh, we have a huge program. I hope someone will have seen the speakers that we have. Um, the keynote speakers are two nationally renowned speakers who will be helping us direct, hopefully, our businesses, our entrepreneurs, our manufacturers, to talk about what's possible with climate tech and clean tech. Um, we know we have lots of empty manufacturing buildings, lots of space that we could re-convert. Um, and we have many entrepreneurs in our region who are willing to do that, but they do need to understand what clients can attract and what they can develop. So we're encouraged. Um, every day I talk to people who tell me they'd be honored to speak. Uh, our panels, I think, are going to be very informative, so, um, yes, it's coming along really well. Thank you.
Very nice.
One comment of that, the LDC gave fifty thousand dollars to the BPU to do this conference. Fifty thousand dollars. The BPU, other than attending a online session, their cost to attend is either a hundred twenty-five or two hundred fifty dollars. And you gave them fifty thousand dollars to put this on.
I don't think that's correct. I believe there's free, there's free admission to those that participate in the webinars. Is that correct, Allen?
The webinar?
Yes.
The webinar, you put, they put a condition
Yeah.
that you have to look at the webinar, some have already passed. But the average citizen, who wouldn't understand the language or the connectivity to the webinar, will not be able to attend this because the price is two hundred fifty dollars.
I, I disagree with you, Doug. I, I think if, if a BPU customer wanted to call the BPU and, and attend because they had a general interest, I'm sure the BPU would entertain it.
Would that happen?
But even then, if you watch the webinars that are pre-recorded, uh, and you spend, what, the two hours to watch the two webinars and you can get in for free, uh, it's not a bad deal.
No, it isn't a good deal.
I'm not gonna argue with you, but I, I'm just answering, I'm answering what you're saying, so, thank you, Allen.
What was the other two? I'm sorry, was one?
I had, uh...
Two personnel.
Two personnel, one law enforcement.
Was that one, the same one?
The same one.
So it's two...
Personnel contractual.
Two personnel, one law enforcement.
I said, if the personnel were contractual, yeah.
Uh, no action to be taken.
I'm prepared.
Have a motion.